Item one, A, Agenda Item, City Manager Executive Recruitment Firm Proposal Reviews. Council will interview potential firms for the executive recruitment of a full-time city manager, discussion and possible action. Council may go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A.3 or four for legal advice or contract negotiations. Our interim city manager, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And for the record, I will not be an applicant here, so I have no conflict of interest in this particular recruitment. So I will, I may from time to time chime in on if you have questions of me, being that I've been a manager in the past and currently. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Human Resources Director who can talk a little bit about the process to date and what we've done working with the council on scoring the current selection of firms for you and your consideration. With that, I'll turn it over to our HR Director.
Good evening, or good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's nice to be here.
Krista, be sure to pull that mic closer, so.
Yes, for Annie's, yes. So thank you for being here this afternoon. We have three candidates, three executive recruiting firms for your review. We had a total of five proposals that we received, and of the top scores, you have those in front of you. There's 30 minutes that we're going to reserve for each firm, and you have the opportunity to ask questions. I was going to ask them to do a brief overview of their firm and their proposal, and any key items that they wish to bring out to your attention. But you have had the opportunity to review those proposals, so it is just a question and answer format. There's no written questions or no script here. If you take notes, the materials I provided for you, you can take notes on that, but you would need to submit those as part of the process. So if you're going to use that as a scoring or any notes, you would just want to turn that in to us afterward. We have the first presentation. We can pull them into the room at 3:10 or anytime right around then. And then we'll have 30 minutes. We'll have a five-minute intermission, and then we'll go on to the next one. And then after that, then we can convene, and you can negotiate or talk about what your thoughts are. And then if you wish to give direction to if you want to select a firm, or if you have other direction, then you can provide that to us.
Okay, thank you, Krista. Okay, so we will wait a little bit then? Are they coming, it's on Zoom, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it's on Zoom. And Annie, I'm not sure, I don't know if they're in the waiting room yet or not.
I don't have anybody waiting at this point.
Okay, it'll be Baker Tilly is our first, is our first firm.
Okay.
I apologize, I wasn't sure how long the preamble would be.
It's all good. It's all good.
Can we talk?
Of course, yes. Oh, you mean Baker Tilly and CBA?
Councilmember Savage, please make sure, since we are in a live meeting, that you use your microphone, because we do need to capture all the stuff. Thank you.
So just, this is a public meeting, and just for the record, Krista, how many did we have submit? I know the council received all of them, and they did go through their scoring, but how many submittals did we have before the council screened them down to the three that we have tonight?
Thank you. I had somewhere around 10 say that they were, or 10 that we'd sent out to. Six said they were going to respond. One was unfortunately not able to at the last minute. So we had a total of five proposals that we're evaluating.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Krista, we have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Krista. So the compilations or the evaluation recruitment, evaluation sheets that we have currently in front of us, the difference between what we received via email is what, as far as the scoring?
For example, on this one that's on our, that's right here, it says out of 14, but on the one that was online in an email, it said out of seven.
We had two, that's just the weighted score for the, for two, we had two people submit their written evaluations. Okay.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, I have another column that I did, I divided it by seven, but divided by two to get the seven, so it's the same. But yeah, that's just multiplied by two.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Oh, I see it, yeah, the weighted score, got it. Well, maybe.
Baker Tilly is ready to enter the meeting if you're ready to have them.
Okay, Krista, I guess, would you like to introduce Baker Tilly?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Krista from the HR Department. Are you Patricia? I don't have her volume. Okay, very good. Welcome, good afternoon, Patricia. This is Krista from the City of Kingman Human Resources Department. How are you?
I am good, thank you.
Fantastic. I'm going to have you introduce yourself a little bit more and talk about your firm, do a little overview, and then we're going to turn it over to our council for a Q and A session. And then if there's anything else you'd like to highlight, we can do that as well.
Thank you, and thank you for inviting me to participate in the discussion about our firm. Baker Tilly has been around for many years. I have worked for the company for, oh my goodness, 15 years or longer. I have, and all of us in the, our firm has the government experience. I've got, I've been a finance director, I've been an HR director, I have been assistant superintendent and superintendent of schools, and I have worked with cities when I first joined them on, working with cities on bond issues, financial issues. And so it's been really exciting to move over to the executive recruitment side of it, because that is my passion. I've worked so much with boards, councils, and commissioners. And with my background, I just absolutely love doing the recruitment. Everybody on our team is, are all full-time employees. There's about 10 of us in the department, and we've all worked in the government setting.
Excellent. Mayor, would you like to begin questions or have anything before we get started?
Council, do you have any questions? I know the packets that you gave us are very informative. Patricia, I don't really, I don't have any questions, Council. Any other questions? Yeah, Vice Mayor, no? Okay, I think that's it for right now. We appreciate it. Are there any questions that you have for us?
So you've had an opportunity to look at our, our proposal. Are there questions or concerns or anything that you have regarding the proposal?
Well, as always, because we're trying to be thrifty, and I'm cheap, I'll admit it right off the bat. So we wish it were cheaper, but we understand the circumstances, and that's just, that's business. So I understand that. So having my own business too. Otherwise, I don't think there's any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Krista?
So if you had any questions about the timelines or any of the processes, this is what, again, if you want anything clarified in their proposal, that's, again, we have Patricia at our disposal here as a point of comparison when we talk to the other folks too. So again, she's ready for questions if there's anything that.
Right, and if I remember from looking at the paperwork before, most of the timelines were all very similar. So because we gave them guidelines on what we were looking for to begin with, and so they all, all the firms, you know, commented about that. So really, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
With what you presented to us. So, oh, Counselor Ward.
On the list of, should get that closer to you, on the, on the list of people that you've placed, I didn't, I didn't see many in Arizona. And the one from 2018, was that our former manager?
That would have been Chuck Rohr. That would have done that. The reason that I didn't put any of the recent ones is because these were the recent searches that I am currently working on as we speak. Some of them have been very challenging in their own ways, and I thought it would be a great opportunity for you to speak to some of them, to get the perspective on how we work through that, those searches. And that is the reason that I put those references down is West Fargo, they went through a situation that they ended up letting their administrator go. They had a lot of challenges and opportunities with the city, and we had to work through all of that. And we were very, very successful based off of everything that they were going through on promoting a great opportunity for this position, and to really highlight the, the challenges that this person was going to need to deal with. And it actually worked in our favor because we had a lot of interest in the position, but they had a lot of questions, and I was able to answer their questions. Because one of the things that we do that I feel is really important in the process is getting to know you upfront, meeting with you, meeting with the staff, understanding what the challenge is, what are the things that you really want this person to, to be involved in right off the bat. And so I'm down there, I'm meeting with each of you, understanding what you're looking for. What is the staff looking for? They're the ones that are also going, they don't make the decision, but it's important to understand what they're looking for, because they're look, they're going to be working with this person from, you know, eight, 10, 12 hours a day sometimes. So we take a lot of time upfront to get to know you and the staff, and to understand what you're looking for before we're putting together the brochure. So the reason that I put those references down were because they were all a little bit different, but a little bit challenging, but fun at the end because the results were outstanding.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Krista?
So Patricia, the reference that Counselor Ward made to the 2018 recruitment, that was when Springstead Waters did the actual recruitment for our former city manager appointment, that, that was the former company that was acquired by Baker Tilly, would that be correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, a couple of questions.
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Patricia. I wondered if you could tell us about how many applicants you would expect to get for this position?
You know, it varies depending on, there's a lot of variables. So it all depends on, you know, what the, the salary range is, what the challenges are, what the opportunities are, all of those and the benefit package. And now, we don't go into the benefit package. What we're, what we usually do is highlight those kinds of things. And so you're probably going to be looking at maybe about, maybe 30, 40 applicants. Now, if you would have asked me this about three years ago, it would have been a different story. The pandemic has changed a lot, and we are finding that we are seeing a lot more of like assistant managers, assistant administrators are not moving up as much as they used to. It's because they like what they're doing, and they don't like all the politics at the top. We're finding that. I had an assistant city manager not too long ago. We had over 100 people apply for that position, and over half of them were city managers and city administrators wanting to go drop down into the second-in-command. And so we're, we're also seeing a large number of retirements in this area. So you're going to probably see about 30, 40, possibly 50 applicants for the position. Now, keep in mind that they're not all going to be qualified too. It all depends on the qualifications. We do get people that qualify, or that feel that they're qualified, but they really aren't.
Thank you. And then just a follow-up to that, because of the pandemic, are you seeing, are you still seeing people that are interested from, in moving from metropolitan areas to smaller towns for that quality of life? Or is that over?
That's a really good question. And what we are actually finding is more people are reaching out to us and saying, a lot of times, people are going up their chain, you know, they want an advancement, that's what they're doing, they're working up. But now what we're finding is family means more to them than salary. And so what we are finding is those connections of coming back home, going where there's a lot of family, we're seeing that is a drawing point for a lot of people now. So that's why we're really trying to look for connections. Why do they want to be there? And then find out, you know, the reasons why, because if there's some kind of a connection, the likelihood of them staying a longer period of time is very good. So things have changed over the pandemic, because of the pandemic.
Mayor, do you want me to go ahead and ask my other questions?
Oh, of course. Continue, Counselor.
Thank you. So can you tell me a little bit about your process for helping the council prepare for the interviews?
So what we do is, when we're there from the very beginning of the process to the very end, the things that we do is, I like to have like a point person or two from the city or the council that we meet once a week. It might even only be 10 minutes, it might be a little bit longer, talking about the processes on where we're going. The other thing that we do is we provide the council with weekly updates, let them know how many applicants that we have, where we posted the position, how many people we went, we did an outreach. And then where we talk about, you know, the processes moving forward, we talk about that even when I meet with the council and with the staff on what the expectations are. We will then walk through the process. Now, keep in mind that this is your process. We have, we have techniques, we have a process that we follow, but this is really going to be geared towards what are you looking for? And what I mean by that is, when we get to the point of doing interviews, do we want to do Zoom at the beginning, or do we want to bring them in on, on premise right away? Those are just going to be decisions that you guys will make on how you want that done. We're going to be there, we're going to walk you through the process on the interviews. We will, we'll help you develop the questions. We will then work with staff to develop the interviews, interview schedule. We'll work around your schedules. We will work with staff on having them meet, like with the candidates, do a tour, those kinds of things. But what I think is important too, is also getting feedback from the staff that can be provided to the council. They can't rank them because that's not their job, but provide feedback. And then we will then set up the interviews on there onsite during the interview process. And then we will also, there is a rubrics that we use for you to be able to evaluate the candidates. So what I usually do will give you a rubrics on, you know, to determine the, the quality and the leadership qualities of each of the candidates. And then under each of the interview questions, I will ask you for a rating, because sometimes if you have, if we're interviewing five candidates, it kind, it, you know, it can get to the point that you get to the end and you go, I don't remember what that person said about that. So I like to have that rating for each of the questions. So you, when we go back together, we analyze your results, and then we make a recommendation on who's going to be moving forward. So we do have rubrics along the way to help guide you to make the decision.
And then for, what do you recommend for that interview process? I know I saw in some of these brochures, it was recommended one-on-one interviews, others as a group interview. I know the last time we hired a city manager, it was the whole council interviewed, and then we also had a meet and greet. So what, what kind of things do you recommend that's the best way to go through that process?
What I like is to have as much exposure to the community as possible. So what I like is to be able to have the leadership group interview these candidates, give feedback to the council in writing, which we have a document for that. We like to do a tour. We also, of course, like to get the council involved, because this is one of the biggest decisions that they're going to make. And the one thing is, is I like to have the candidates come in one at a time. We can always stagger them, but I want them to shine on each group, and I want them to have their time with each of the group. And so I really do like to have it structured that way. And then, once we get to the finalist, have a meet and greet, and we, what we will do then is we'll usually have a form there for the community that they can fill out, and then what we'll do then is provide that feedback also to the council.
Perfect, thank you.
Great questions.
Thank you. And then my last one, I just, I want to clarify, I think it looks like it's about eight weeks until we would see a semifinalist, is that right?
Yeah, so what, what we usually do is I would be out there, we would develop, I, first of all, I need to understand what you, what you're looking for. So we can start as quickly as possible. I would like to understand what you're looking for. We would then put together a brochure that will go national, and it will also have part of the job description. It really highlights your, your community, things like that. Then from there, we'd like to advertise for at least a month. And so we'll advertise with all the organizations, the national, the local organizations, and we're big into using social media. LinkedIn is very successful, I mean, we're very successful on that. But we do a huge part of our outreach is actually getting on the phone, calling them, emailing them, talking to individuals that we think are going to be qualified. We have a huge database, but they're not all going to be qualified. We need to understand what you're looking for to be able to target the right audience and to be able to get them. And so from there, then what we do is we have them complete a questionnaire, a due diligence form. Now, that questionnaire will be, it's not designed yet, but once we understand what you're looking for, we have them complete this, that may have like about 10 questions, things that are really resonating for your city. It could be that they need to be strong in finance, economic development, you know, a variety of things. A resume can be professionally done, but what we're doing is really honing in on what, you know, what kind of person you're looking for. And that's what the questionnaire is all about, and it's a great resource. And then what we'll do is a one-way interview. And so when you get the semifinalists, because we give them about a week to complete that, then what you would receive are the top candidates, which could probably be between, you know, up to 12, 15 candidates. You'll have their resume, their cover letter, those questionnaires, and a link to review the one-way interviews. Then from there, we will decide which candidates are moving forward as, you know, the finalist. And then what we do at that point is, we will then have them do a management and leadership assessment to see, you know, if they're going to be a good fit. And then we'll do background checks, references, and we will also do a, a social media search. We'll dig up to see if there's anything out there that we need to be concerned about. So there's a lot of vetting stuff on our part. So by the time you're going to be interviewing, you're looking at about two and a half months out.
Okay, very good, two and a half months. Let me ask you about that background check. The last time we were hiring, our first choice ended up not working out, and it was missed in the background. They weren't really serving in the capacity that they had sort of said they were. So once, once our mayor and vice mayor flew to their hometown to go and, and check and see, they came back really disappointed. And so I'm wondering what you do, because I did see your list for everything you do for the background, but how do you, how do you double-check that that professional experience is accurate?
With the criminal background check, you know, it does say, you know, a lot, I mean, we will say their employment, it will say, so I'm not really sure what you're talking about, if they weren't employed at the right place. Those kinds of things are always double-checked. So if they say that they were a city manager at certain places, those things are all verified. We will verify that. So if they say that on a resume that they were a city manager, but they're, they're not, they're an assistant, those things would be picked up.
Perfect, thank you. That, yeah, that's the situation. And my last question was about looking into our region, our count, like a countywide search. I'm curious, when you, when you're doing your marketing and, and advertising the open position, how will we be able to get locals or sort of locals to apply if they're interested?
Very good question. So that goes back to our, our advertising too. And this is what we want to find out is, what are you looking for? Are you looking for someone that is in the area that knows Arizona? Then we will do a national, but we're going to target as many people from Arizona. Then we will do a national, but we're going to target as many people from Arizona, of course. Um, and then people that maybe have left Arizona and want to come back. We're going to target those people too. What we do is, um, within the state that we're working with, we will, will have, um, an email that will go out to all of the city managers, city administrators, county administrators in the state. So they will all get the information from us.
Great. Thank you for answering all my questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Sayly, and thanks Patricia. And actually, along those lines, Patricia, um, for example, and I, and I'm sorry if I overlooked it and didn't see it, but is there something like a no-compete clause? For example, if we were to advertise locally and find somebody, would we have to push them your way?
Yeah, we don't typically, um, yeah, we don't typically ask the city to be advertising when we're doing that.
Okay.
That doesn't work well at all for many reasons.
Sure.
So what we usually do is, you know, we will have it on your website and what we will do is work with your IT person or your HR. And what they'll do is they'll put that link out there, but it will push it to ours for information.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
And the other thing is if there are individuals, because this is something that I do ask, is are there people that you want us to go out and, um, contact? Because we will certainly do that.
Okay. Okay. You'll do the legwork for us, basically.
Oh, absolutely. That's our job.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Patty, I, I was intrigued by that question. It's been raised by our counselors about the local candidates because they definitely have some folks that are interested. And I was trying to explain that it's not really competing, but we want them to go through the same exact process as the, all the national candidates. So you know that you've got the best candidate above none, right? So it's kind of how that works. Could you talk a little bit deeper? You talked about database and then you just talked about an email list to send out contacts to the city or to the towns and cities and stuff. What other things do you do for passive candidates that are in the role, that are successful in their roles, but aren't necessarily seeking to change, change positions? How do you target that?
Those are the ones we're targeting. And what we're actually doing is our outreach is probably the most intense for us because we're actually getting on the, are getting on the phone, calling people that, you know, they're really good about answering our calls. And we will let, first, here's how we start. We give them an email and let them know about the opening. Then what I will then do is get on the phone and call. And they will always say, you know, thank you so much for reaching out to me, but you know, at this point, I'm not interested. And then I'll say, you know, but just think about it. And then I'll call them back and I'll say, here are the reasons that I think you might want to take a look at this. I know that you have been involved. So just say, for instance, you have something going on in your community that really resonates with someone else that has done it similar. I will start to tell them, they're going through this. And I know that you have already gone through that and you've been very successful. That's the type of person they're looking for is someone like yourself. Now, then they're starting to think a little bit more about it and going, hmm, um, they're really kind of interested in me applying. So then at that point, we will start the dialogue. If they say, for instance, well, I can't leave because I've got, um, I've got something in my contract that if I'm staying around here another four years, this is something I'm going to get, or it, it's really important for me. When I'm having my weekly updates with whoever my contacts are, these are things that we're talking about. Because if, if we know that maybe that could possibly be a deciding factor in trying to get someone here, we see if we could open up that door to, to be able to bring this person in. So these are the things that we go back and forth and we talk about to say, that might be a possibility. So why not just put your name in and, you know, and they're aware that this is really important to you? And then they can decide if they're going to be bringing you forward and if they can afford being able to do something like that.
Thank you. That, that helps.
Uh, can I ask one other question? Patricia, thank you again. Appreciate all the input. We will, uh, that.
Mr. Mayor, Patricia, as, yeah, as I mentioned to you in the, the emails, um, we have two other candidates that will, or firms that will be interviewing today and talking about it. We will definitely let you know where you stand at the end of the day and, and get back to you as soon as possible. And we really appreciate your time and consideration in sending the proposal and meeting with our council today. We appreciate that.
Thank you so much, and we would love to, to be a part of your search, our team. And, uh, I wish you all the luck and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't think your microphone is on.
Mayor, yes, I just turned it back on. Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate it. But Patricia, thanks again and have a good evening.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch. Perfect timing. Nope, that's all good.
They, they are in the waiting room if, if, whenever you're ready to proceed with the next one, if you want to.
You guys want to continue?
Go ahead, schedule.
Carry on. Krista, do you want to go ahead and introduce, please?
Yes. Good afternoon. Is it, is it Linell?
Yes, Linell Klein.
I'm Krista from the Human Resources Department here with the City of Kingman. We want to welcome you to the process and thank you if you're available early. We are here to, to get started, if that's okay.
That is just fine. I am ready.
So the format, I think I mentioned in our correspondence, was going to be a question and answer period for our counselors to get to know you a little bit, a little bit more about your firm. But you're welcome to kick it off and tell us a little bit more about who you are, the firm, and highlight anything in your proposal that you might find the council could, uh, be interested in.
Okay. So we have actually been in business for 26 years. We started in 1997. I've been with the firm since 2010. Um, we've had a long time to tweak our process and, and we feel like we have it, um, down pretty much as well as it can be. Um, in our experience, the times that we see, where we see searches fall apart are usually for two reasons. Um, and the first is communication. And so we make sure that we always really communicate with you, but also with the candidates. Um, you know, so we make sure they know the interview dates way ahead of time so that they are available when it's time to interview. And that the elected officials, everybody has the project schedule so that everyone can be available. We communicate regularly through the process and, um, keep you updated. And the other area where we're a little bit different from our competitors is we do our background checks upfront. We like to know that whoever we're recommending to you has a clean background. Um, and so when we present them to you for consideration, we will have done our research very, we, a lot of our candidates tell us it's like applying for the FBI. Um, and because we're very thorough and we make sure that if there's something in their background that you should know about, you will know about it. And if, and sometimes it precludes them from being presented to you, but, um, we just make sure they're clean. And the nice part about that is that, once you make a decision on who you want to hire, you can go right into negotiations and you don't have to wait and, um, and no embarrassment can happen by finding out issues in, you know, after the person has already been selected. So we just, we have a turnkey process. We do all the work. We won't be a burden on your staff. Um, we have a wonderful network across the country. And, uh, we will, like I said, make sure that we communicate well and thoroughly investigate anybody before we present them to you. So.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Do you want to lead off?
Yes, thanks, Krista. And Linell, thank you and welcome. We're glad to, uh, got to communicate with you and we appreciate your proposal. Um, Council? Any other questions? I know Counselor Sayly probably has similar questions. Correct, Counselor?
Uh, yes, I'll go ahead and ask the same question I asked last time. Um, so thank you. I, I wanted to start out by asking, how many weeks from when we, the first day when we hire you until we see semifinalists?
It's usually about, um, somewhere between, I would say 60 and 75 days. So we do, we take a few weeks to put together the recruitment profile. Our profiles are really deep, very detailed. Um, you know, we feel like it prevents the candidates from deciding that they need to do research and then forgetting to do research and then not applying. So we like to have a lot of information upfront. We typically, our recruitment window is, is, we like to have a four-week recruitment window. Um, sometimes we'll do a three and a half, four-week window. And then it takes us another probably three to four weeks to complete the background checks.
Okay, thank you. Can you, um, sorry, I'm looking through my notes here. Can you tell me about how many people you expect would apply for this position?
Uh, yes, I would say typically our recruitments have had, uh, between, uh, I would say 40 and 60 is the typical number.
Okay. And can you tell us a little bit about, um, you know, who you, who you expect to be applying, what, what you're seeing, um, just as an industry standard, uh, for people applying in a, in a rural town?
We haven't seen much of a difference between rural and, um, and other communities. Um, we have a, so one of, one additional aspect of our company is we work until you're happy. Um, so we take our job very seriously and we don't, we actively recruit for the position. So we will do marketing in the region, targeted marketing in the region, you know, in Arizona and around Arizona. We have our email list that goes across the country. Um, and if we reach the point, typically we, because we are, we so heavily market the position that typically when it closes, we have a good enough pool that we feel like we can move forward. If not, uh, we do extend the deadline sometimes and, um, but in that case, the project schedule will not change. We'll just work harder to get everything done on time. Um, but typically we work, we start work on about 10 to 12 individuals, background checks on about 10 to 12 individuals. And, and then some will drop out because they get another position or something changes in their personal life that they don't feel that they can make a move right then. And so we end up usually presenting between eight and 10 individuals.
Thank you. And can you tell me about, um, marketing locally or within the county or the states? Um, what, what is your marketing process that would maybe reach people that live either in our town or nearby?
Uh, well, we would, we contact, you know, so we'll put together a marketing list of cities in the region. Um, you know, you're pretty close to Nevada, so we would include Nevada, Arizona. So communities in that population, right, in a similar population range. And then we just start emailing out the brochure. Um, because even if the, to the city managers, uh, sometimes in the bigger, bigger communities will target the assistant or deputy city managers. Um, we figure that if they're not interested, they may know somebody who is and they can pass the brochure on. And that's been very effective for us.
Thank you. Can you tell us how you help the council prepare for the interviews?
Yes. Um, we, we prepare the, so when we send you the candidate reports, we will send you a document that has a lot of interview questions. Um, prior to, once the finalists are selected, we'll send you, um, our evaluation guide that talks about different ways of evaluating the candidates as well as kind of a, the questions that we would ask if we were an elected official looking for a city manager. Um, and so you're welcome to use our questions. You're also welcome to create your own. And we also prepare the ballots and we have a voting procedure that moves very quickly. Uh, through the process, it just kind of makes everything really simple. Um, and so we will, we will get that to you before the interviews.
Great. And can you tell me in your experience, um, what is the best interview process? Is it, um, the council as a group interviewing each candidate? Does it involve, uh, city staff, a meet and greet? What, what does that look like?
Ideally, our ideal situation is that the candidates come into town and they start with a tour of the city, uh, which is usually led by a staff member, a knowledgeable staff person. Um, and at the end of the tour, there's a staff meet and greet. And that evening, so that typically happens in the afternoon. And then in the evening, a public reception where the residents can come and meet the candidates. You know, the, the person that you hire will represent you with the public. And so it's a good time for you to sit back and watch how they interact and see how that's going to go. But it also serves as an icebreaker where you can meet them informally uh, before you get into the heavy interview questions. Um, one thing that we always recommend is one-on-one interviews. So the next day, the morning would start out with one-on-one interviews with each elected official. And we usually give you 30 to 40 minutes. And that's just to test the chemistry. If you can't communicate or talk to that individual, you're not going to be able to work with them. And those one-on-one interviews are very crucial to determining whether you can work with them or not. And then in the afternoon, we recommend panel interviews. So that way you can see how each candidate interacts with the elected body as a whole, which is another important piece. So we like to cover all the bases.
It sounds like it. Thank you. Uh, that was a great answer. Um, I don't think I'm missing anything. I think that, I think that was it.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Linell, you had, uh, mentioned also, for example, uh, we bring that person in and have a meet and greet, you know, in the afternoon, they drive around. How many, that is, that's already narrowed the field down to what? Three to five?
Oh, yeah.
What you're thinking?
That's a very important part. We recommend that you choose, you select five.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering.
And it will be your choice how many you select, but you know, sometimes candidates withdraw. You know, something will happen in their family. We had one recently where his, you know, anyway, health reasons happen and they withdraw or they get another position. And so if you start with five, and we actually recommend five and an alternate.
Okay.
Um, we ideally like you to interview five because on paper, you think you know them, but it's much different once you're in the room with them. And so, um, the more people that you can interview within reason, the, the better luck you'll have at actually picking the person that's right for Kingman.
Sure. Well, let's face it, even as they get here and drive around town, it might not fit for them. It might not be what they were thinking it was. So totally understand. Okay? Council, any other questions? Krista, do you have anything to wrap up?
No, I don't. Uh, Linell, we are really grateful for your time and for your submission of, of a great proposal. Um, I think we've kind of mentioned that we have three candidates that we're interviewing today. So we will proceed, um, by saying we will get back to you as soon as possible. The council's hoping to make decision, you know, quite quickly so we can move forward with this recruitment. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I forgot to add earlier that I'm an Arizona girl. I was born and raised in northern Arizona in Holbrook. And I have a great love for the state. Um, I want to thank you for your consideration and I would love the opportunity to work with you.
Uh, thank you, Linell, and we appreciate your time and of course, your company's interest in working with us. So, uh, have a good evening and we will be in touch, as Krista said.
You too. Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay. Krista, what was the next scheduled was for what, three fifteen, I would imagine? I mean, four fifteen? Four twenty? Okay. And they're probably not in, no, that's way early. So, let's take a break then, I guess. I mean, I might as well. Fifteen minutes?
Yeah, I'll reach out to see if I can make sure that they get, you want to say at four?
Four might be better because we can get the person on the phone.
I agree. The faster the sooner the better. That's, that's fine too. Whatever, what do you think, Counsel? Ten minutes is not time? Okay, let's do it. Okay, Krista, I think we're ready. So, would you like to go ahead and introduce?
Yes, Mayor.
Our next?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The city council welcomes you. We are happy to have Mary Jacobs and Sarah McKee, I believe. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate your time and the, the consideration that you did when submitting your proposal for us. I have explained that there's two, two other candidates or firms that we've been interviewing. And we are going to wrap this up this afternoon and hopefully be able to get back with you after this, this process. And we've got about thirty minutes set aside for you. If you want to give us a high-level overview, kind of introduce yourselves, tell us a little bit about yourselves as well as anything that would be specifically interesting about your proposal or about your firm that the council can use for their understanding of this process. Thank you.
Your volume is, Annie, can you?
That's me, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. Thank you.
There we go. Well, ladies, welcome. Appreciate your taking the time to meet with us today. And
Thank you so, excuse me, Mayor.
No, go ahead.
Well, Mayor, members of council, it is our privilege today to be considered as your future partner in recruiting for the city of Kingman's next city manager. I'm Mary Jacobs. I'm Executive Vice President of GovHR USA. And with me is Sarah McKee, Senior Vice President of GovHR. We know you have some questions for us and we also know that you've read our proposal. But we would, we would like to take a minute to just briefly introduce ourselves and our firm so you can get to know us just a tad before we move into those questions. Just real briefly, GovHR is a public management, recruitment and consulting firm that serves clients exclusively in the public sector across the country. Our firm is made up of local government executives who all have a passion for professional municipal management. We have clients in forty-five states and we have over forty consultants located coast to coast. We've conducted over twelve hundred recruitment since the company's inception. And over the past three years alone, we've recruited nearly a hundred and forty chief executive and assistant chief executive positions in cities, towns, villages, counties and special districts, just like the city of Kingman. We've assembled a team that we believe will help you find your ideal candidate. Both Sarah and I are Arizona residents. And while I'm newer to GovHR, my more recent experience as an Arizona city manager, most recently in the town of Oro Valley, plus my leadership roles with both the International City County Management Association and the Arizona City County Management Association have given me considerable connections in the state and beyond that will help in this process. Sarah has also served as a city manager and she has nearly ten years of experience, executive recruitment experience with GovHR. She's developed her own extensive network of city management professionals across the country. GovHR's philosophy is one of service, integrity, trust and respect. We partner with you, our client. We deliver services professionally, thoroughly and on time. We provide you with our honest assessment of candidates. We are committed to and we have a recognized track record of strong communication during the process. Our consultants are highly regarded as local government leaders known for our commitment to the profession of local government management as well as executive recruitment professionals. And our reputation and national presence brings credibility to your process. We encourage you to talk to any of our previous GovHR clients. In fact, ninety-four percent of our clients rate our services as outstanding and that they would use us again, many of whom, at least a third of them have used us again, and we're very, very proud of that. Our commitment is to bring the Kingman City Council candidates that meet your needs, nobody else's needs, your needs. We take time to find out what the qualities, skills and expertise you may need in your next city manager. Whether that's transparency, strong communication skills, economic development expertise, financial acumen, we use your expectations to measure the qualifications of potential candidates. As Arizona residents, Sarah and I also understand the unique local government structure within the state. And we can quickly focus on issues that may be of particular importance to Kingman during this process. We're committed to bringing you high-quality candidates of diverse background through our tailored process. And I'm going to turn this over to Sarah now. She's going to walk through what our great process is so you can get a little bit more detail.
So, Mary talked about the fact that we do a very extensive partnership with you and that's, that's how we want to see this throughout the entire process. Excuse me. and that's how we want to see this throughout the entire process. Excuse me. And so, from the very beginning, we partner with you. We try to determine what the needs are from a council standpoint, what the needs are from a staff standpoint, and certainly also what the needs of community stakeholders, if that's a part of your process. The other thing we will say, I will say from the beginning, is that the process that we use is one that we've had in place for quite a number of years, and we've tweaked it and so on and so forth. But we also listen to you, and so if that process needs to change based upon what you would like to see, you know, some people want to have a meet and greet, some people don't want to have a meet and greet, and so on and so forth. But skipping ahead a little bit, but you know, our process is that we partner with you from the beginning. We want to make sure that we know all the ins and outs. I like to say all the skeletons in the closet, if you will. But you know, every city has experiences that are good and are bad, and we want to be able to share everything that we can with candidates, and we want to know everything that we can about Kingman. I mean, you know, we may not live very far away, but we don't know all the details about Kingman at this point. But we sure will by the beginning of this process and throughout the process. And so, you know, through that process, we speak individually with you. We want to talk individually with you, because while you do work as a board, you do have individual thoughts and processes that you would use to evaluate these candidates, and so we want to know what those are. If you would want us to talk to the department heads that would be reporting to this person, we would certainly do that as well. And then, as I mentioned, we think that community stakeholders do play a major role in this. As a city manager, they're going to be involved with different types of organizations within your community, whether they're civic organizations, you know, they're kind of a quasi-governmental, like a chamber or school district and so library. We want to make sure that we've heard what they want to say to us about the candidates that they would be looking to work with as well, because we know those intergovernmental relationships are extremely important, especially at this level. And so getting to know all those things from the very beginning, while they may not all go in our brochure, the things that we hear, the things that we talk with you about, there's certainly things that Mary and I will have in the back of our minds when we begin to interview candidates, and when we begin to even just call them down. That's what we're looking for. We're looking for what you've told us the experiences are that you would like to see. And so that's what we're looking for in those resumes when we first start doing that initial calling of the candidates. And so we use all that information, and then obviously with Mary's extensive work here, I did not work in Arizona. I was a snowbird, but Mary's, you know, she's been in the state for quite a number of years in two different communities, and certainly knows many of the people in Arizona. We, one of the things that we like to really showcase that we do is we partner with so many organizations that are part of ICMA, like NFBPA, which is the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, IHL, I always get it wrong because they change their name, International Local Government Hispanic Network, that's what it is. So we partner with them, and we partner with, there's a group that's kind of just starting out, the Asia-Pacific Public Administrators Group. And so we partner with all of those groups to reach out to them. Not only do we partner with them, we go to their meetings, we present at their conferences that they have, and so we get to know a lot of those people that work in that and are members of those associations. And through that, we've really branched out a lot of the connections that we have. And so when we reach out to them, we can reach out knowing that we have partners with them that help us create a stronger candidate pool, we think. And so with that, we've obviously come together with a lot of good candidates. We start to go through that process. The one thing I think that sets us apart from others is that we actually do a one-on-one interview with the candidates that we've chosen to move forward in the process. Many of the other firms just do a one-way interview, and so we really like to do the same thing through a Zoom process, where we talk to the candidate for about an hour and just get to know them and understand, you know, what their backgrounds are. And I think you can tell a lot about a person by being able to at least Zoom with them. Obviously, we would love to do it in person, but that's how we are these days. And so I think that sets us apart from some of the other companies that worked like this. And, you know, as a executive recruitment firm, we want to make sure that we bring the best candidates to you that we possibly can. We know that other firms can bring you candidates as well, but we think that we bring our experiences and what we've seen in the industry and what we know about the industry and what we will know about Kingman that we don't already know, that will help us to bring the best candidates forward. And then through that process, we would work with you to probably bring that number down smaller. Typically, what we send to you would be maybe 10 or 12 candidates that have made our cut, maybe more. We never know. Sometimes I've had as many as 18, but usually 10 to 12 is kind of the number that we use. And then through those numbers, then you would then narrow it down to maybe five or six candidates that you would like to either, you know, do an interview this way with or bring onsite, whichever you choose. And again, as I said, through that process of interviewing, we tailor that to what you would like to see, what you feel is best. We've, you know, done all kinds of different things. We put them through assessments when they're there. We've done interviews individually and as a group. Like I said, department head interviews, stakeholder interviews, whatever you want that to look like, to where you can get a true understanding of what each candidate brings to the table and has to offer. And so then obviously, we help you through that process of questions, of evaluation forms that we can bring to you. We have sample questions that we can give to stakeholders, that we can give to department heads. So we have a wide variety of different questions, if that's what you would like, and then obviously any questions that you would like to have perhaps added to that list. And so through that, and then you would probably narrow it down to two or three more candidates, two or three candidates, and then probably bring them in for a final interview. It's typically how it works in the process that we use. But it can change based upon the community. And so with that, I think that again gives you an overview of our process and allows you to understand how we do things and why we do them. But certainly, we can answer any questions about that as well.
Well, thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Mary. Mary, of course, in the paperwork, the bio that we have of you, well, you both have served as city managers. And of course, Oro Valley, we, Vice Mayor and I were looking at the size of Oro Valley, and so you've been there during a lot of growth, too, it seems like. Sarah, what, how big a town did you serve when you served as city manager?
The first one I served was about 8,000. The second one I served was almost 30,000.
Okay.
And then the third one I served was a similar size, about 27,000.
Great. I mean, because obviously, as you know from our statistics already, Kingman's about 34,000 plus, and of course, with the surrounding area that is basically another 20,000, real right there within mile, I mean, close, very close, as part of our overall town. And so I appreciate that, because you both have experience in our size of town and what we're looking at. And so I appreciate your perspective on that. Counselors, I know Counselor Salee has some, but before we turn over here, Counselor Savage.
Good afternoon, ladies.
Good afternoon.
On your process, I like that you said you bring your more qualified in for one-on-one interviews with you guys. How many people are interviewing that prospect when you do that?
You know, it really depends. We'll interview as many candidates as we feel are qualified or meet the qualifications that you've outlined. And so we want to get you the ones that really check all your boxes wherever possible. So we might personally interview 15, 18, you know, or more, and then we'll narrow that down to the ones that we say, yes, these are ones who could be a good fit for Kingman. Now, in our report to you, you will always get the names and locations of every candidate who applies for the job, but we'll provide you with the full background of the individuals that we're recommending to you for consideration for, you know, for interviews, whether that, you know, some organizations do remote interviews for their semifinalists and then bring the finalists. And those are things we'd work with you to tailor to meet your particular needs.
Okay. But when you guys are doing the interviews, at a one-on-one interview, or are there three of you interviewing that prospect?
No, we'll do one-on-one. So probably what we'll do in this case is Sarah and I will do a little divide and conquer. Or if one of us is busy on another recruitment, then one of us might do all of the interviews for consistency. So we don't know, I can't tell you for sure who's going to do the interviews, but it's typically just one of us.
Okay, thank you.
Counselors, any other?
Through the process, I should say, through the process, it's Mary and I. There's nobody else in the firm that you would have to be communicating with. It's either Mary or I, and we're with you through the, throughout the entire process. It doesn't get handed over to anybody else to do that. So, and we do that because when we present the candidates to you, obviously, we have had that conversation, as Mary said, and so we want to be able to talk to you about what was said and what was heard.
Okay. Do you start your process with background checks right up front, or is that farther downstream a little bit?
So typically, what we do at the very beginning, once we have narrowed it down to, as Mary said, maybe the, let's just say 15 candidates, for lack of a better number. And so we do what we call extensive background in social media. We don't go to the criminal one, because that is a cost to you, and so we wait until you have narrowed it down to the semifinalists, and that's when we do the actual background checks. But we do find out a lot of things through social media that pop up, either from news articles about them and when a previous employment, or things that we found on their social media pages that should or should not be there. And so those are the things that we know, and we talk to you about that. If there's a candidate that we feel like is a good fit for Kingman, but perhaps there's a negative article out there, we know how the press can be, and if you work for the press, I apologize upfront for that. But, you know, not everything you read online is true. And so we want to make sure that when we do the interview with them, we have those articles as well. And so Mary and I would talk to them about, hey, what happened? What's this article about? You know, why the negative press? And so we have those answers for you, because anybody can do that now. You, most council people have Googled them by the time that we're there to present candidates, because you're going to get that book ahead of us. And so we do that, and I think that, and a lot of criminal stuff is found that way as well, because if there's arrest, then we're going to see that, too. We may not see a speeding ticket, but we would see those. We would also see, we do court background checks as well, to see if they've shown up in these civil cases.
Okay. Well, thank you. Counselor Salee, I'm sure you have some questions?
Yes, although you checked a few boxes off just in your presentation, so I thank you for all that information you gave. My first question is, how many applicants do you expect to apply for this position?
You know, it's a little bit hard to know for sure, but based on our experience, based on the fact that this is a rural, more of a rural, not completely rural, but more of a rural area, we're sort of expecting somewhere in the 30 to 40 range. Could be more. There are a few things going on right now that are impacting recruitments across the entire country, and that has nothing to do with Kingman. One is simply interest rates. People are a little reluctant to be moving, people who might be in metro areas where they can move to another community without selling their home, you know, they're potentially looking for other positions. But we are seeing a little reluctance on the part of some candidates looking to completely relocate. So that's just an FYI. But, you know, again, nothing we can do about it, but it could, may or may not impact some of the candidates that we might try to reach out to. The other thing, of course, will be based on the final salary and benefit structure that you have identified. Arizona is a very desirable place to be right now, so that is a big draw for you, and I think that will be a big benefit, particularly from other areas of the country where it's more expensive to live. And of course, we'll use that to your advantage, and really, you know, there's a lot of great things going on with, in Kingman. We just learned about your zip line, your zip line that I wish I could be there. Okay, I probably wouldn't do the zip line, but I congratulate you for that. That sounds like fun, with your Route 66 event next weekend. So there's, you know, there's a lot going on, but again, we would put you in the best possible light while also sharing very honestly with the candidate, what kind of, you know, what's the organization, what is the community climate? A lot of folks are, you know, potentially bringing their families, or someone may be looking, one area I think you have a great opportunity in is somebody who is towards the end of their career, maybe their last five to 10 years, and they're looking to eventually be in Arizona. And so this, you know, this could be a real great opportunity and an attractive place for them to be.
Can you speak a little bit more, I mean, you just touched on it, but a little bit more about who you think will be applying? What is their background or experience?
Yeah, I think for this one, you know, a lot of times when we see communities about this size, we see assistants who are ready to move up into a full manager's role. You know, they've been an assistant, maybe in a little bit larger town or about the same size, and I call them our up-and-comers. And so they're ready to take the leap and become the manager, and I think we'll see those. As Mary indicated, I think we'll see people that have thought about retiring to Arizona, and this would be an opportunity for them to come here and see if that is the case. And, you know, if they're not ready to retire, hopefully, then we can attract them here anyway. But I think that's, you know, a lot of, obviously, we don't know about your internal candidates, or perhaps you could have some internal candidates, and just, I didn't touch on that earlier, but just so you're aware, we treat internal candidates exactly the way we treat all the other candidates. They're put through an interview process, just like we talked about earlier with Mary or I. And then additionally, I will say, the only thing that we don't do is a reference check for them through our process. We would do it through your process, once you want to know if they're going to move forward or not. But that's just how we treat our internal candidates. And so I think we're also going to see people that, I didn't mention assistants, but also I think we'll see some of the department heads that have been in larger communities who want to come and who eventually have wanted to be a manager, perhaps their community doesn't have assistants. A lot of, this is about the size town where you start to see assistants. And so, you know, they may not have had the opportunity to be an assistant, but they've been a director for a number of years. And, or maybe they've been, like myself, I was a director in a couple of different departments, and I did that on my way to being a city manager. And so I think we might see some of those as well.
And if I might just add, we also might see some candidates who are from, who are currently managing, maybe just a few years in smaller communities, who have the breadth of experience just in a smaller organization and ready to move into a larger organization. And I think, I think in Arizona, that actually could be potentially a good fit. They'll be familiar with all of the Arizona laws. It'll, you know, it could be a real easy way for them to slide in. It's just a, you know, it's a scope issue at that point, but if they've had success in, you know, some of your priority areas like economic development, if they're, you know, have a good financial background, you know, that, and capital management, that could be a really good opportunity as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. And you touched on internal candidates, but what about local or regional candidates? How will you market to them, and how will they be able to apply?
Well, sorry, Sarah. Go ahead, Mary. I was just going to brag on you. You bragged on yourself.
One of, we'll do a couple of different things. First of all, it's going to be really important that you help us. And so I'll work with your team to engage your communications group, so that you also help get the word out. You put it on your website, and work with your local partners to get the word out. That's always good to get that information out locally. We also are, you know, we're always looking, and we'll work with you, and we'll present you with our recommended sources for advertisements. You know, there are a few, particularly for this recruitment. Naturally, the ICMA is, you know, something that we would strongly recommend, as well as the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. They have a, they have They have a, they have a job posting. That's important. And anybody in Arizona will, will get that. But if there are, you know, if there are places or social media locally or in your region that might be a little bit outside of the norm, we're going to research that. And we're going to find out how we get the word out, put links to the, the application. The other thing that we're going to do is we're going to ask you, do you know of anyone that you would like us to reach out to? And then we will personally call them confidentially, not sharing where we get the information from, and invite their interest. So, you know, that personal connection is so important. One of, and LinkedIn is a really, really strong, in fact, we were just looking at some data in the past month or so. And of those candidates that are interviewed by the consultants, about two-thirds of them come from two sources. One is GovHR. So our, our own website, we get 17,000 hits to our career page every month. The outreach from, from the recruiters, whether that's an email, a LinkedIn message, or a phone call. And then the other one is, is LinkedIn. Those are the two sources that we get about two-thirds of the qualified candidates, those that our recruiters interview from. So those will be at the top of the list. And then depends on each community, you know, where those are. So if the chamber has a, you know, way of getting the word out, we'll probably partner with them. Or, or your communications team will give them information to share with the link. So, so lots of different way. And, and that's when we, you know, when we sit down with each of you and, and speak with you, we want to find out what your desires are. Where is the reach? And then we'll use that to dig and find out how we can get that word out.
Great, thank you. And then can you tell me what, what is the, what do you think the ideal way to go about those final interviews? Is it one-on-ones? Is it the whole group interviewing each candidate individually? Is there a meet and greet with the community? How does staff get involved? Tell me, like, what do you see as being ideal and the most effective way to get the best person?
I think, you know, for a community this size, what we would typically see is kind of what I touched on earlier. Perhaps you would have a tour one day with the candidates. And then perhaps the meet and greet could be that night with the community. And then we kind of do what we call like a round robin of the candidates are moving from, you know, one place to the next. But typically, typically, a council would interview as a board, not individually. It's not that you can't, that, again, that's your choice and we can work, make that work. But typically, we would do it as a board. Again, as I mentioned, you might have a panel of department heads that you would like to. We've seen department heads, but we've also seen panels of employees that maybe are the entry-level employees just to show that they're as important as, as the department heads are, even though they don't have that direct line of reporting. We've even seen that happen before. It just depends on, again, what council wishes. And then our stakeholder groups, which typically, you know, would be chamber, Board of Education people, superintendents of schools, or prominent people within the community that you've identified, people that perhaps serve on some of your committees. We've seen that where if you had like six committees, I've had, I've had a panel of committees, which is like a representative from each of your committees that would interview them as well. You know, anybody in the community that you've identified, the chamber director, any of those, you know, whether it could be clergy people, we've seen that before because we know the influence that, that they have in the community as well. And so it's really, again, as Mary said, we're going to ask you who, how do you want it to look? And ever how you want it to look is how we'll do it. We'll make it fit within, usually it's a two-day process, just by the time that we can get everybody together. And then usually there's a lunch, you know, for, for everyone to attend. And we, we've done it different ways. I like to personally put all the candidates in a van and give them the same tour. Some people find that a little bit strange, but it's been happening more and more. And I think one of the reasons I like to do that is because if you have different people taking each candidate, they're not going to hear the same thing or see the same thing. And so when you put every candidate in a van and take them on a tour together, they see the same thing, they hear the same thing. And so when you, when somebody refers to that later in an interview, they can, you know, oh, I went to the civic center today and saw, you know, whatever it was. And so, and you know, the candidates are going to know, some of them will know each other and some of them won't. And you can also see how they interact with each other during the lunch. And so we like to just showcase how they, you know, operate, again, like Mary said, with the, with the meet and greet and how they do professionally that way, and then how they do in a room with the council people and in a room with the directors. And then we have somebody in there that then provides that feedback. They also get a evaluation sheet that we can give them. And then Mary and I could call those together and see, you know, where, where the candidates fit in as far as that. Or we've had where somebody, a representative of that group comes back to council and they give their assessment of what the people within that panel thought about each of the candidates. And so we've done it a lot of different ways. And we will hear it toward your desire of how you would like to get to know those candidates best.
Thank you. I think that, that was all my questions.
Hello again. On the local advertisement, you will be having that directed to you, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You just want to make sure everyone goes through the same process.
Yes, absolutely. We want everybody to go through the same process. What we typically do is when it's on the city's website, it'll just have a link that'll go straight to our website.
Thank you.
No, thank you so much, Mary and Sarah. It was so, so great to meet you both and provide the information to our council. This will conclude our interview process. And then the council will be convening and discussing the proposals and the, and the conversations that we've had here today. And we'll be glad to get back to you all as soon as we can.
Great. Thank you so much for the privilege of being here before you. We wish you the best of luck. We know that Kingman is a, is a great place to be. I think this is a terrific job. And I'm confident you'll find a, a great manager. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't have my mic on. I didn't have my mic on again. I should just leave it on and just, because I normally don't say anything anyway.
Were any of these, were any of these companies in prior use for city managers for Kingman?
That one, the first, the first one was.
First one was.
Mm-hmm. Yes, Krista?
That's when they were talking about the, yeah. So the question was, was any of these firms that we've talked about today in the previous positions of city, are city management? Is that correct? I was stating the fact that the Springstead Waters Firm was our actual company that did it. They were acquired by Baker Tilly a few years ago. The principal that worked on our account is somewhere in their business, but he didn't show up when I was searching for, like, just to, if that was the same company. But it is a reiteration. And when we talked with the presenter, was that, was that Linnell? I can't remember now which was what. She kind of glossed over it because she was not a part of the team back then.
Okay. So do, Carla, do we need to go into executive discussion, session to discuss this?
We can go into executive session. Yeah, yeah, we can do that under, I guess we'd call it subsection four, kind of discussing the contract and the type of proposal and who you want to select. You don't have to go into executive session. But if you feel the desire to do that, we definitely can. Or if you have some specific legal question, so.
Counsel, do we need to go into executive session? I don't think we do, but I, in case, that's why I was looking for some guidance from Mr. Cooper. So what are your thoughts on all this? Vice Mayor, oh, Counselor Ward?
I like the last one.
I would support that.
I would echo the same. I, I like the fact that they have a local Arizona presence. And not, not that that's a big a deal, but in some ways it is. And they both have been city managers, and they both have been city managers of towns similar to our size.
I agree. I like the last one.
I as well.
GHR.
So I think that's our decision. Oh, Counselor Salee, I'm sorry. We need your way in.
Yes, I, I agree with the group. It's very interesting. I came in today with a different favorite, but the interviews were so important and really swayed my decision. I agree with you guys on, on the last one.
Okay. Then I think.
Would you like to entertain a motion?
I think we need a, we, yes, we need a motion. It will be correctly, right?
I would like to make a motion that we enter into an agreement with GovHRUSA for the city manager executive recruitment. Is that what you'd like to say? Here?
Yes, thank you.
That works. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Once again, Krista, do you have any, any final comments? I think you have direction that you need.
I do have the direction I need. I just need to know from Mr. Cooper as far as the contract. Is this give the, authorize the mayor to execute that contract?
I assume that they've seen the contract, the contract's already, yeah. So as long as you guys are all good with that contract, then we are, it sounds like you're authorizing the mayor to engage.
We're ready to move forward then.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Then with all that, I, once again, I appreciate you all being here and taking time out of your busy days to, for this special council meeting. And we are adjourned. Thanks.